Hey, Jacob, we can call the roll, please.
Butler?
Here.
Jordan?
Lipscomb?
Here.
Oakridge? Here. Smith?
Here.
Rash? Vintenzo?
Yes.
Five members present, two absent.
Okay, I did hear from Linda. I knew she wasn't gonna be here this evening. I don't know, J.C. might just be running late, so he might be popping in here. Okay. Go with the minutes. Does anyone have any questions? Did everyone receive their copy of the minutes from the previous meeting? Does anybody have any questions or things they want to ask about the previous minutes? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
I'm sorry.
A second?
I'll second.
Take a roll, call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakridge?
Standing.
Smith?
Yes.
Vintenzo?
Yes.
Four in favor, one abstention.
Okay, the minutes have been accepted, and that is the official minutes at this time. We have no correspondence that I'm aware of, no one citizen's hearing, anything of that nature, so at this time, we'll go with the mayor's report.
Thank you, Jim. And first of all, I'd like to thank our guests from RCAP. Thank you for coming in, and thank you for all your time in doing this exhaustive study. I know you and Jeremy have worked on it a long time, and very, a lot of hours went into it. I appreciate it very much. And since we don't have anyone new here, if you want to cut and run, I would certainly get that.
Okay.
You don't want to drive.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ryan.
I mean, maybe if we needed to, we could even set up a teleconference if anybody wanted to, but so you're...
He gave his card to everybody.
Okay, good, good. All right, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Careful driving.
Yes.
Okay, my thanks to the various city departments who have been kept busy the last couple of
weeks. They hit storm, a lot of winds. Did we lose any power this weekend, Jeremy? I did not.
Do we lose power?
One or two services.
Oh, well, okay, we did. We did lose some power. Was it out all day, or was it...? Thank you. Thank you, guys. I appreciate everybody's efforts to keep things up and running. We've had some wild and wacky weather. I was very privileged to attend the presentation of the check to our city rec department. Much thanks again to Gulfport Energy of the over $7,000 gift to install stage lighting for the amphitheater. This feature will again permit the city to use the amphitheater for increasing and variable times as well as to amp it up for the professional bands and presentations. Thank you, Eric, for making this happen, Eric Gaye. I was delighted to attend the band fundraiser and dinner at the high school a week and a half ago. There was a lot of good food, and a lot of talent on display. Thank you to our St. Clairsville band for that wonderful evening. And I was honored to speak at the Vietnam Veterans Welcome Home Day on March 28. That date was chosen to honor these veterans who did not come home to a hero's welcome. It was a privilege to acknowledge their heroism. And once again, thanks to St. Clairsville Band, they did an awesome job there as they always do. This past week, I met, or last week, pardon me, met with Danielle Mason, who's with the Attorney General's Office and Chief Arbans regarding a new initiative from the Attorney General's Office. This initiative is going to acknowledge and identify veterans, and when they are interacting with law enforcement, they're gonna be offering additional training to law enforcement with how to cope and interact with veterans because they have special needs and special problems. Right at the meeting we had that day, Chief offered some very valuable input to Danielle. She was gonna take it back to the Attorney General because they are assembling a state protocol, so I appreciate that, Chief. You guys consistently make me very proud. And Danielle told me she wanted to have our department as one of the pilot programs because of their wonderful record. So I'm very proud of our department and for the honor, and I know they will do an exemplary job. Thank you. And I was notified that I've been selected to be one of five out of 900, and this just doesn't sound right, one of five nominees to the John Glenn Leadership Training this summer. I am indeed honored. I was notified by the gentleman from the Ohio Municipal League, so that'll be in July. And I did ask him, I said, "Why did you pick me?" He said, "Because you speak your mind and you're colorful." So I don't know how to interpret that, but I'm very honored indeed. So that's about it, Jim. How can I top that, you know?
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for the mayor?
Be careful.
I do. I just look at you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I mean, that is a big honor, you know, and I think that...
I'm very flattered.
You know, you do tirelessly advocate for St. Clairsville.
I try. I welcome that.
So I think that's a recognition of that, so congratulations.
Thank you, Beth. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments for the mayor? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Service Director Jeremy Greenwood.
Evening, Council. Couple things. Council items, we've actually got a piece of legislation, 2023-11, that's really weird, but salt purchase. We're asking, we just got that, it's due May 1st, we're asking for 200 tons. This is emergency language because we don't have enough time between now and May 1st to get it all in three, but it can be read at the next council meeting, too. Had 14 different meetings since the last council meeting, completed projects, water nodes and meter installations, that's a constant, or we're constantly working on that. The gas segregation opt-out letters went out. You should have received those in the mail. We've had several calls, and we've been directing them towards Traveel Energy on the Sidmont Tier. Yep. The 1929 water tank was inspected this week, or last week. Water rate and civil rate study, as we mentioned, we were going through it in the utility committee, review the findings, had the representative here. Also had a pre-construction last Friday on the water distribution project. Upcoming projects, we've got a spring cleanup scheduled for the week of April 17th, so the 17th, that's Monday through the Friday, we'll start Ward 1 and then work our way around. That is for naturally fallen brush. It's a pickup for that, and we'll shred it. Working with the street department, looking at tarring and chipping some alleys and some different things in the area. Paving, looking at what's available and what we might be able to get in. Looking at the water line breaks from the last 10 years, it doesn't look promising because there's some various areas that'll need to have water distribution updated before we start looking at paving it. Working with the engineer on the sinkhole, they're getting survey done. Also working with him on the bypass road for North Market Street. Mentioned the water node installation, that's just constant, it's gonna be constantly going through. Construction, the I-70 water line, we're waiting on the liner to be manufactured and brought to the site and installed. Route 40 water line, working with the engineer on that to get that moving. We're waiting on a permit. I thought we had a permit, but apparently they, they've switched, EPA has switched now from doing reviews in the regional to the main office in Columbus, so we're trying to figure out that, what's going on with them. Water distribution project, we mentioned that pre-construction, they're gonna start on the east side of the city, be starting in the Spring Park area. What we're gonna do is we're gonna send out a code red for those areas, when we know which ones are in there, and then we're gonna do door hangers that have additional information for those Working on, you know, still all the building projects in there, met with HR again on the administrative policies and procedures. Working with Michael on our inflow and infiltration plan. ASME negotiations are gonna be coming up, and then the water tanks, as I mentioned, that one, the 1929 was inspected. Once I get an evaluation report on that, we'll have some repair work on all three of the tanks. Department-wise, electric department, we still have an opening for linemen. We've actually got two spots open. Doing pole replacement, service work, disconnects, streetlights, meter reading, substation maintenance, truck maintenance, and now we've started tree trimming also into that mix. Trying to be preventative and keep stuff from grounding out and going through it. Water and wastewater, we've got our new superintendent here for wastewater system, introduced him in the utility committee. Mentioned the water line, water nodes, water line work, breaks when we can find them, and the leak detection equipment. Working on policy updates, the I-70 project, the distribution project, still hauling sledge from the water department lagoon, fixing hydrants and curbs and valve boxes when we can. Actually, today counts as the third one, since there was technically a break today, so we've only had three water line breaks for this year. Smoke testing, working with Michael to get some letters that'll be sent out soon. Water nodes, making appointments to get them installation into buildings. Street department, we've got an asphalt crack machine ordered. It'll be here the week of May 8. They'll be going out and crack filling some of the streets that are in good shape. Also out patching potholes, doing street repairs, working on culverts. They just replaced a repaired culvert on Carroll Drive, starting to get ready for mowing. I hate to say that, but you know, that's where we're coming up at, and they were doing some storm cleanup. We had some trees that come down in different spots. Rec Center is still finalizing the summer concerts. Once we have all of that in, we'll get that in there. Police Department, the hood was ordered, as I mentioned, it's still not in. The hood tables aren't in. Chief, did you get them installed, or they're still down there?
No, I got one halfway to go. I'll finish it.
Okay, and then the lockers are up. I believe the guys are using them now, aren't they?
Yes.
So that's something, it's kind of nice if you guys want to go down and look at them sometime, they're pretty good. Good in the city, no one's been out sick. I know our rec director had just had surgery, but he's back from that. And then I also want to send a thanks to RCAP, to Brandon, for help with the rate study and going through it. I'm sure we'll be going back and forth to that and get from there. And then I think that's everything for tonight. Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for Jeremy?
Beth?
Don't we have a ton of salt?
Yes, we do. But in order to stay in the program, we're gonna order a minimum amount. We can order more. I think there's, what Darren tell me, 650 tons on hand now. Last year, we had ordered 700 tons because we were out, basically. So we will have salt, we have plenty of salt, but in order to stay in the program and still get the competitive pricing, we're gonna order 200 tons, which we can use 200 tons in one bad snowstorm. So it's not, it keeps us in the program, but not committed to a significant amount.
Do we have a place for this salt?
Yes, salt bin.
My backyard.
It is spilling out and brimming over, but we're gonna tarp it the summer to keep it dry, and then we will utilize it. Now, this salt, this 200 that we're gonna order with this, will not be ordered until next winter.
Okay, we're just pulling, we're not getting...
We're just getting in the queue to order it, just like last time.
How much is this?
It depends on what the price is. We have no idea.
This just keeps us in the program?
Keeps us in the program.
And it's not gonna be delivered until...
Next year. Yep. Like, if we would have more space, the 700 that we got now, they were down to, what, $75 a ton last year? We were buying it before at $95 and $100 a ton, so we were saving a significant amount. Just, we just don't have any place to put it. I mean, we've got it stacked to the ground.
Okay. Thank you. The paving, do we have any paving in the budget?
I put paving in the budget, but the problem is, like I said, just the last 10 years of water lines alone, I've looked at it and gone through it, there's not a street that stands out. We've got probably potential for two that we can look at. I'm working with Darren on it to make sure. One of the things that, once this distribution project's gonna go out, and once those are done in those front areas, we're gonna have a lot of streets that will need repaved. So...
What's in the budget?
Once that gets through, pardon?
What's in the budget now?
I think we put another 400 in there.
400,000?
Yeah.
50 or 400?
Something like that.
Okay.
And then there's another fund that has state money that I can only use on state routes, which is Route 40 and 9, and then there's the county, what is it, the gas tax or license plate gas tax?
License plate.
License plate tax. But in order to get that, you have to submit it and have the engineer approve it, which streets you're gonna through and go through it. That was depleted in 18, I think, or 19. It builds up every year, so we've just been letting it get built up, and then we'll go through it. But like I said, once we get the first part of this done, we're gonna have plenty of streets that we're gonna have to pave because we're gonna be trenching them.
And do we think that distribution and those, that paving would still be this year?
Potentially. Now, the problem that we're gonna have is, before we pave them, we had ordered a crawler camera to go in. We're gonna take all of the storm sewers that we've got and all the sewer lines, and we're gonna crawl them to make sure they're all right before we pave, and then we'll be able to actually say, "Okay, here it is, everything should be good." Darren just went out, somebody's replacing their sewer lateral this, today, and went out and looked at a culvert, and the whole bottom of it's rotted away. But it's one of those things that's gonna be right where the distribution project starts, so we're not gonna touch it until that's done, and then start working on it.
And last year, the only street we could conceivably pave, because we knew for sure we weren't ripping it up with the distribution, was it Edinburgh?
Edinburgh. And then we did South Marietta, too, in December.
There's still a couple potentials. You'll give us those street names?
Yes.
For the next meeting or so?
We could. I mean, I have a map here based off of what we had determined, what we were looking at paving, and then when I went through and made little hash marks where all the water lines are, they're everywhere. That's like you said, the Phase 1, 2A, and 2B, which would have covered the whole north side of the city, was 54% of the water line breaks in the last 10 years. So it's not even, I mean, they're just everywhere. It's just not concentrated in one area.
Okay, so, but the potential streets, we can get names?
Yeah.
Okay, not right now, like, just, yeah, okay.
I mean, but there's not many.
Okay. And then the sinkhole, my question is on that, does that pose a danger?
We have it roped off, and there's caution tape up. Right now, theoretically, no one should be around it. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have anybody near it just for safety, but immediate danger, no. I mean, but we're working on it to see. The other problem would be the rest of the culvert, if that culvert is any worse. But we're waiting to get the crawler camera, which was ordered. Do we have an ETA on that, Mike?
They said 30, 50 days from when we were bid.
Yeah, so in the next month or so, we should have this crawler camera, and we're gonna be able to put it up in there to determine how bad the rest of the culvert is.
Okay, and then I have two, two more, and I just, Mike, I recognize that you introduced Mike in the utility meeting, but that's not recorded, so for the record, maybe we just...
No problem. This is Mr. Michael Reed, who's our new wastewater superintendent.
Hey, Mike.
Started on the 6th, didn't he?
Yeah.
So it's kind of, he's having the baptism by fire, so we've had some blockages and some other things, and some water line breaks that he's found, and so he's hit the ground running.
Sounds like it was the golden touch to me, so...
Just love you.
Okay, we'll take it. And then my last question, my last question is, when is the ASME contract, when is that contract actually?
It's due, it's, the current one ends in July, so the negotiations will be starting soon. ASME rep has reached out once or twice. He's also met with the union reps, our employees, so I anticipate that being within a month or so, we'll probably start.
So, thank you. Appreciate it. I have one question.
Thank you, Beth.
And I meant to ask this the last time, just because I think I, I feel like I missed something. The North Market Bypass Road, can you explain what that is?
Basically, what we are looking at doing is taking out, there's a section of North Market that's in the township, comes down to Junior Sports Fields, if anyone's ever driven it and been...
Oh, that's right.
Yes, been on it when there's multiple vehicles or bus or anything else coming. This will actually be able to set a section with a resident to bypass that and come down directly into Junior Sports, and then that road can be decommissioned. We'll have to work with the township on that and go through it.
Thank you.
That allows us to loop our water in so that we can put our own water for the Junior Sports Fields, because currently we're on the county right now, and also allows us to loop the electric in that area for more reliability.
Thank you.
Welcome. Done.
I have some questions. Beth didn't ask none of my questions.
Don't bother.
You said the water tank inspection. Do we have a report on that yet, or?
Nope. Okay, once that's available, I'll let you know. But I did talk to the camera guy that was out there. He said it looks like, appears to be in decent shape, especially being almost 100 years old. There's some sediment in it, but we had sediment in the brand-new tank at Dorothy, too, so it's just a matter of, we're gonna have to schedule a time to clean them and go through it. The problem that we've had is, right now, we've got the I-70 project. Once that's going on, we're gonna have to disinfect everything again, and then we've also got, what was the other one? The distribution's starting, and then, there's something else, just lost my mind. Oh, the sledge. When we do the sledge lagoon at the water plant, we're going to take the settling basins that are under the plant, and we're gonna hose them out, too, because we can't just demo it if we ever demo it, and going through it. So when that happens, we have to shut the water plant down. When the I-70 happens, we're obviously gonna be disconnected from the water plant, so we have to make sure the tanks are full then. We can't have one of them out of commission at that time. So it will probably be later on in the year, somewhere, sometime or something. We'll just see what plays out with everything.
And then the water liner for Interstate 70, we have it like two weeks out, so we should be pretty close?
I have not heard anything, the manufacturing, the liner, I haven't heard anything on that. So as soon as that's in, then it's just literally a water, a water line project. So that's the last step under the interstate.
They did move an excavator out of my yard. Is that...
No.
Oh.
Now, in the east side for the water distribution, any start date on that, or?
They were supposed to start getting materials on the lay-down yard today, and then they said sometime in the middle of the month. So they're gonna start out there and then work their way west into town.
Okay. And then the two hires for the electric?
We don't have any. We're looking for two to be...
Oh, looking, okay, okay. So I mean, when will...
We advertised once already. The deadline was the 31st, and we didn't have any applicants. We're advertising again, putting paper again. Dawn's gonna go up to the lineman school and check them out. They've got a graduating class in May, but we'd like to not have to wait because obviously this past weekend, we only had two guys on. Part of the problem is, is the salaries. It's, you know, we're somewhat in the range of municipalities for in a lineman, but you know, we're nowhere near some of these private companies. AEP and South Central are in the same position we are. They're constantly looking for people. So they're getting cherry picked, we're getting cherry picked, and then they're coming in and cherry picking our people, too, and it's just a constant, you know, battle. But you know, when a guy's getting offered 10 more bucks an hour, you shouldn't really fault him for trying to improve himself.
If you can keep us in the loop on that, and that's all I have.
No problem.
Any other questions for the service director? Okay, thank you, Jeremy. I'm understanding that when we were supposed to have the four-hour power, I don't think we actually lost power, did we?
Run into you want to respond to that?
I didn't hear that.
The power outage, the four-hour, four-hour, I think we handled it all off the...
No, we didn't lose any power at all. We carried everything from the other substation.
Okay, so that's Sunday night into Monday, we actually know the city actually lost the four hours' power they thought, so that's...
There will be, there will be two others coming up this year, though. So we'll have those once we have dates confirmed.
But that's, I'm sure everybody's glad that power didn't go out.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the police chief. As, you have a report?
Yeah. Evening, Council. For March, we had 511 calls for service answered, 14 crashes, 47 arrests, six warrants served, seven domestic violences, and 154 traffic stops. Currently, we have one officer out on training. We have three more officers registered for two-day trainings that the Attorney General's Office reimbursed the cost of. Mayor mentioned we had a meeting with Danielle Mason to discuss that veterans' response program. The juvenile justice jeopardy program that we piloted last year has been picked up to be paid for by St. C. Schools, so they were happy with the program and agreed to pay for it. And extend another thank you to Lieutenant Stewart and Officer Clark for continuing to help identify and deliver excess food supply boxes to residents in town who need them. That's it.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have any questions for the chief?
Glad you're feeling better tonight.
Thanks.
Jim, I'd just like to thank the chief for the outreach with that program. I don't hear that any other city's doing that, but of course, I'm not in touch with them, but it's a good job.
And if I can make a comment with the outreach program with Greg Stewart, if you go look at my office, there's about 100 Easter bunny bags in there that we're gonna be delivering tomorrow to senior center, senior suites, children at Silver Center, which is Center for Autistic Children, and Easter bunny will be going up and down the street. I'm not quite sure if I'll be wearing the red of yours or who, but it's a wonderful thing to be able to reach out to these kids and our seniors, and we'll, we'll be visiting some senior citizens at home that Officer Clark and Officer Stewart and Matt have identified maybe half no one, and at least stop and say, you know, "Happy Easter," get a hug, Easter bunny. So it's a nice thing. It's a real, makes us feel like a community. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, move on to Finance Director, Annette. You have a report?
Good evening, everyone. I have no financial report. I did attend the Ohio Municipal League training for my required training last week, Monday through Wednesday. Got some good educational few things, so that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Annette. Anybody have any questions for the Finance Director?
On the paving budget, did we have a line on the budget for paving?
We do.
Okay.
I can't remember if it was 350 or 400,000.
I don't remember seeing a line on that.
I think it was 400,000. There would have been an actual, under the street department, there's one that's called Streets, Roads, Paving, but it wasn't the budget.
Well, there's two, because there's the one for that and the one for the state one.
The state one was 2021. The other one would be under 2011.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Annette. Move on to Planning and Zoning Administrator, Mr. Murphy.
Thanks, Jim. Council has in front of them the official report to council regarding the proposed rezoning of the 17.56 acre parcel of land on the west side of town. That was emailed ahead of time on Wednesday of this past week. Proposed new zoning district in C-1 Commercial, the planning commission voted 2 to 1 to recommend city council that the proposed zoning amendment be granted as requested in C-1 Commercial. The next step at this point is for city council to direct me to set up the required public hearing before city council, so I guess, I mean, you can ask any questions at this point in time, but council should give me to go ahead and set that public hearing up.
Need a motion? When are you thinking of doing that?
With the way the timeline is in our code, it would be May 15. That would be, no, the second meeting in May.
So it would be the meeting, it's out of council? It's out of council.
Right, it would be at a council meeting, and I've worked with Jim in the past, I'll work with him again as far as how that'll, where it'll be located in the regular council meeting and how it should be appropriately followed so that people don't get out of hand, I guess, is a good way to say it.
Pitchforks and torches.
Is this done by a motion?
Yeah, just a motion and second, and a, and all in favor would be fine.
I would make the motion to present this matter before council for a public hearing.
Yeah, and just directing me to set up that public hearing.
To direct, Mr. Murphy, set up the public...
Motion would need a second.
I'll second it.
Take a roll, call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vintenzo?
Yes.
All members in favor.
Okay, then.
All right, so I'll go ahead and set up that public hearing. The only thing I want to make council aware of is, you may have noticed the alley across from PNC Bank Tenzio, that's the fiber company, and that we've discussed, they started borrowing today. They started boring today. They did, they were slowed a bit to confirming a location of a gas main, which they did, and continued working. There was a water service that they had to keep an eye on. As of 5:00 p.m., they were about three-quarters of the way down Birch Alley. So once they get moving, I mean, they can move pretty quick. It was impressive to watch that machine work and the guys. Everything they were doing was by hand, pretty much. I mean, they didn't have a piece of equipment there, but every time I stopped down, they had shovels. After they finished a certain area, they were tamping the ground, putting everything back in and doing it properly. So that appears to be, I'm sure they'll have other problems, but so far, it seems to be moving pretty well. And the plan is starting tomorrow, as long as they finish everything up today on that Birch Alley is to start heading in an easterly direction down Woodrow Ave. And that's.
So, anybody have a question, Beth?
Just on this zoning, like, we just, we're gonna have a meeting. Does the city have a recommendation?
Well, at this point in time, the recommendation is from city, or from Planning Commission, as I mentioned.
Okay, and that'll come in your report?
It's in the report that you received Wednesday.
Okay.
And was officially presented today. So you've had that since Wednesday. That has the report to council in it, as the email I sent. There's the staff report that Planning Commission had before them, and then the attachments that were also presented to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So my suggestion is take a look at that, review it. If you have questions, contact me at that public hearing. Members of the public can come forward, they can ask questions or state their opinion.
Okay, any more questions for Tom?
Okay, I do have one question.
Sure.
It's either for Christie or Tom. The vote was two to one?
Yes.
What, the one no, what was the concern there?
That was the mayor, and she.
I tried to table it. I wanted to go over the information ICR had presented.
I thought it was somebody else that was at the meeting, but.
No, he, yeah.
Plus, my high doctor was there. No, I'm just teasing, that's not it. But it was, I wanted to look at the information ICR had presented about what their plan was for, what the building would look like and things like that, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Tom. Because we want to counsel committee's finance, Don, do you have a report?
Yeah, we will not have a finance committee meeting this month on the seventeenth of April. So our next meeting will be on May fifteenth, and that'll be at six fifteen.
Don, do you want to move that to six?
We could.
Oh, wait, just based on our discussion, to have that little extra time? You think that's good enough?
Yeah.
Can we do that, Jim? Okay.
Sure.
Okay. So we'll have that meeting on May fifteenth at six o'clock.
Yeah, we'll just make a notice to the public that that meeting is not gonna be held, so that they're aware. In case someone decide they did want to come and show up, and nobody will be here for that. So we will make a public announcement for that.
Wait a minute, I'm confused. We are having, are we not? Yeah.
Yeah, on the fifteenth.
Not this month, though.
Not, we're not having one this month.
Not one this month.
You're not having a finance committee meeting?
In April, no, not this month.
I thought that's the meeting that we were talking about, that we were gonna still meet.
I thought it was.
Utility, a special utility meeting that night.
They want to have a special utility meeting.
You're not, okay.
Wait.
Yeah, the next finance meeting will be in May, but next council meeting, what would normally be the finance committee meeting,
it will be utilities.
We're gonna hold a special meeting, which will be.
We're still talking.
Also announced to the public. And I assume you want to do that at six o'clock also.
I know it's probably gonna be pretty confusing with everything that'll be going on, the May fifteenth meeting with the zoning. Do you see any issues with that? Okay.
I don't see, unless you want to start your, unless you want to start the finance meeting at six that night also.
Well, that's what we're gonna ask them to start it at six.
Okay, so yeah, we'll just.
Okay.
We'll make a, we'll make a public notification that there will be no finance meeting this month at the next meeting, and we will have a special meeting, which we'll announce later in the May, and that will be at six rather than six fifteen. And then again, we're gonna do at the next council meeting at six o'clock, the special utility meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Donnie? Okay, move on to utilities, do you have anything to report?
So we had a meeting tonight, and we went over the billing report, and we had four sewer requests that we approved. We had a lot of discussion about rates and things and county water. We want to go ahead and do, so you could, that's what we were just talking about. Our, we want to do a special meeting for utilities, April seventeenth at six p.m.
Right.
Okay.
And we'll have that put in the, to the press and also on the website.
Just so we're not getting confused, a lot of this is, okay. So April seventeen at six p.m. will be the special utility meeting in place of the finance meeting that is not going to happen that night.
Correct.
Are you able to invite Brandon Evans back?
If he has, if he said.
If he's able to make it?
He told me that if we need him, let him know, but that's up to.
That he's coming from Sandusky.
That he's coming from Sandusky.
Oh, that's great.
Well, you can do a tell.
So we can do a call, yeah. Yeah.
We, we can see if we have questions for him, too.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yeah, so let's just plan for the meeting at six that night, and then if we have further questions for him, we can get to, I don't want him to, I forgot.
Yeah, so they can call him on the phone later.
We can see.
Okay. Okay. All right, so that, and so that's, that's the report, change of, well, special meeting, I guess. And then I'm just, we still have quite a bit to discuss there. And we're gonna do that meeting at six p.m. also.
Okay. We'll make sure that it gets minimum forty-eight hours of notice to the public, so that we're in compliance there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Move on to police. Mike, do you have any report on police?
I have the report we didn't meet last month. I'm gonna talk to the chief and the committee members and see if we want to meet on the seventeenth, and if we do, I'll let Jacob know, so we can get out the public notice.
Okay, 'cause tentatively it would be that night.
The seventeenth, the same day as the special utility committee.
It would be afterwards.
Yeah.
And if you decided not to have one of those, no, we'll emphasize that.
Okay. And I have the report on the north side.
Okay, anything, Mike, on north side?
No, no report.
North side streets. J.C.'s not here. So move on to building and grounds, Beth.
Yeah, I, we had a meeting on March fifteenth, so I don't believe that I've given a report, because I wasn't here at last council meeting.
Right.
So we had a meeting on the fifteenth of March and discussed the sinkhole and then took a tour of different buildings and grounds. So went around the city, just kind of looked at the different places that we talk about in our report. So the majority of our time was visiting the sinkhole and visiting the, that street you asked about, like, it was a real bumpy, it was bumpy, checking.
Not marginalized, definitely.
Yeah. And the water department, so, so it was, it was productive use of time. Our next meeting has not yet been scheduled, but we'll schedule it, and I'll be able to announce it at the next council, so that we have that forty-eight hours. It'll probably be the week of that.
Okay, sounds good. Does anybody have any questions for Beth? Okay, Planning Commission, Christie?
I have nothing additional to what we discussed earlier with Tom.
Okay, thank you. Lynn is not here this evening. Recreation, you have a report for the rec department?
I do. There are fifteen community garden spots still open for this year. And most importantly, there is an Easter egg hunt this Saturday at ten a.m. It is free, ages one through twelve. It's down at Central Park, sponsored by Unified Bank. And the next meeting is April twentieth at four thirty at the rec center.
Say that Saturday at what time?
Saturday at ten a.m. They have it kind of sectioned off by age groups, so they don't have like one and, one and two-year-olds trying to chase eggs with the twelve-year-olds. They kind of, they have a lot of volunteers, and it's very organized, so.
Ages of one to twelve?
Ages one to twelve.
And you say it's free?
It is free.
Okay, thank you.
What date is your next meeting?
The next meeting is April twentieth at four thirty.
So I, so back to the zoning meeting.
Okay.
That we're gonna have on the fifteenth?
Yes.
Of May, that's the next step. The commission, the committee is saying two to one, yes, we agree, go ahead and do this. Do we, is it come to the council for a full vote, or it's just the next step is a hearing?
So the Planning Commission is, has recommended the zone change. Now there needs to be a public hearing.
Yep.
That's what we've done tonight, it's going to be on May fifteenth.
Yep.
And will that be the first reading?
No, that wouldn't be a first reading. That would be just an opportunity for people to speak in favor. There'll be a presentation by the petitioner, and then members of the public can come forward to speak in favor or against. Following the public hearing, that's when city council has their final, you know, you have your vote whether you're in favor of accepting the recommendation of the Planning Commission or against that. If you, the city council were in favor, that's where you direct staff, Elizabeth, myself, to drop an ordinance, and there, the ordinance would then be presented at the next council meeting and for, at a first reading.
So will there be expected a decision from council on the fifteenth, then?
Council, I mean, you don't have to decide that date. You can extend your public hearing and have another public hearing, say at the next council meeting, potentially. So, you know, if you, for some reason, if the entire council didn't feel comfortable in making a decision, then someone can make a motion to extend that public hearing. People on council might be in favor of it after that public hearing and make a motion to that effect. That's how London would be against it, and make a motion to that.
Okay, I'm just, in my head, just trying to wrap my head around what the next steps are. So I get the, the committee has blessed it, and now it has to be set for hearing, it has. But council, there needs to be a resolution from council to move forward.
Well, council would have a vote on the whether to accept Planning Commission's recommendation after the public hearing. And then.
And then do that on the fifteenth.
If it was approved, then we would have to draw an ordinance, and that would run. So not a resolution, but an ordinance.
Okay.
I would rather not do it at that meeting. We have to give the appearance that we're, rightfully so, that we're willing to go over what people said at the meeting, maybe take a couple weeks to think about it, and do it at the next meeting.
That would totally be up to council. You know, someone wanted to make a recommendation to extend the public hearing. Then again, you're extending that public hearing from the fifteenth to say if you want to have it at the first meeting in June, extending that public hearing to June, which you can do if you want.
But it's still gonna be a public hearing, and it's not gonna be any different.
If we don't.
We have to do it right after the public meeting.
You don't have to do it?
But if you don't, there's another public hearing.
Yes.
And it was heated the last time, I don't know how many times you want to have that, I don't know.
That's fine, we can do it then.
I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, I hear what Mike's saying. On one hand, I absolutely want to hear what people say, that's why it's a public hearing. On the other hand, I certainly want, you know, want to respect the recommendation of the committee. So, I mean, it's, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the process here, right? So.
It's a little bit different process than what we're used to.
Yeah, so he's, so the committee is making a recommendation to the full council, and then the full council then makes a motion whether or not to have an ordinance drawn.
Right, you're making, basically making a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission, to deny it, or to, you can table it and then have a decision, or extend the public hearing is the best way to say it, to the next city council.
You wouldn't do the ordinance based off the recommendation of the committee? You need a full council for that.
Right, council makes a final decision.
Okay. So it'd be like in utility, would you recommend something to that, okay. Thank you.
And if you have particular questions, always feel free to reach out.
No, I mean, it's clear, I just, the process is a clear demand, that's why I'm just trying to clarify that.
If you have questions, I'll feel free to call me.
Mike, I have a question for Christie, or maybe it's for Jeremy or Eric. Regarding the concert series, does the city have a permanent license now for everyone to sell beer?
No, we get a license per event, is my understanding.
Are we gonna do that?
Yes.
I don't know if they're having it at every concert, do you know? I know the first one for sure.
Yeah, I think Eric is planning to.
Okay.
So.
And, yeah, there's a couple that are obvious, they will be selling beer.
For sure.
Any other questions?
It was, it did make a lot of money.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Christie?
Quickly, how much are the spots for the community garden, are they the same as last year?
I do not know that. I believe they are the same.
I had some people ask me last year, and I don't, I don't really remember that amount, but I just wondered if they were gonna be the same.
I'll find out, and I'll let you know. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Christie. Again, Lynn's not here, so we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions, or law records.
There is one piece of legislation before council tonight, that's Resolution number twenty-two-three-eleven. That's a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in twenty-twenty-three, declaring an emergency. This can be read at least twice, should council so choose. The actual notification that needs to be sent in is due May first at five p.m. That's why we cannot have three reads.
And we just got it.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we just got it last week. It's basically the same type of, we do this every year, essentially.
Have a question. We have the approximate cost on?
No, they, yeah. They award that later.
Depends on how many tons are in there and everything else. Like I said, this year, we were down to seventy-five tons, or seventy-five dollars a ton. Year before was ninety-three dollars a ton or something like that, it's just, it's everywhere.
Is that, if we, you know, don't need it. I'm sorry? If we don't need the salt, I mean, we still have to do it.
Whatever we order, we have ninety percent, we have to order ninety percent. So we order seven hundred tons for this year, we are on the hook for six hundred and forty tons.
Okay.
So we've got another hundred tons or something that we have to order.
So even though we have a surplus right now, would that still have to go under this year's budget, or does that matter? Could it go under next year?
No, because it won't be purchased until next year.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Jacob, would you read ordinance number, oh, I'm sorry, Resolution twenty-two-three-eleven?
Resolution number twenty-two-three-eleven, a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in twenty-twenty-three and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that's the first reading. In order to get this in by the deadline, it would either have to be passed as an emergency this evening or passes an emergency at the next meeting. So does anyone wish to take any further action?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions, we write on three separate readings if you suspend declaring an emergency.
Okay, we need second?
And you, you need all five, yeah.
Take a roll call vote to see if this will be considered, and if it does, take five votes.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Yes.
Oprich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vincento?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, this will be considered emergency legislation, so we'll take another reading and take a vote on the motion itself, or the res, resolution itself.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three eleven, a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in twenty twenty-three and declaring an emergency.
Okay, will someone make a res, or a, uh, motion to vote on the second? Okay, take a, take a roll call vote to vote on the resolution itself.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oprich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vincento?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, Resolution twenty twenty-three eleven has been passed, and that takes care of that. That is everything on the agenda for this evening. I will ask, if anyone has forgotten to bring their ordinance book up, please drop them off at the building as soon as possible. Uh, we've got the inserts there that'll be updated in order to get them changed so that they're up. I don't know how many ones were brought in tonight, but you get them downstairs yet?
I got two.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I mean, it was very clear, and I really do feel bad.
You too.
I'll, I'll be able to sleep tonight, but I do feel bad.
Okay, well, just, just try and get them up as soon as possible, only because it will take a little bit of time to go through all the books and get them returned back to everybody, so that everything that you have in the book is accurate. Other than that, uh, nobody has anything else. I will enter any motion to adjourn. Second? He needs to adjourn.